Good evening Yorktown and welcome to the Works Town Board Work Session for July 27th, 2021. If everyone can please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman Patel, you want to lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
If we could please take a moment of silence as we remember of course our frontline workers who are being challenged again with the increased case of COVID-19. We also keep in our thoughts and prayers individuals in our community who continue to overcome intellectual or physical disabilities as we celebrate 31st anniversary of the ADA and of course we keep in our thoughts and prayers our first responders, our police officers or firefighters and our ambulance workers and lastly our bravest men and women the world has ever known, the United States soldiers serving overseas today. Thank you. We'll go through introductions, we'll start on the end. Oh, you can start down here, yeah.
Down here.
We'll start right down there.
Hi, Dave Paganelli, Yorktown Highway Superintendent.
Moral Weissletter, Deputy Town Clerk.
Diana Quast, Town Clerk.
Matt Slater, Town Supervisor.
Tom Diana, Councilman.
Ed Lackman, Councilman.
Adam Rodriguez.
Oh, my apologies, Adam.
I'm not here, I'm not here this evening. Adam Rodriguez, Town Attorney.
I'll have your earmuffs on.
We've been going for two hours already, sorry about that. Just a few very quick announcements. We're going to start with Hill Boulevard. Hill Boulevard, weather permitting, will reopen at the end of the week. That is the latest from our project managers. So if you can do some, I don't want to call them rain dances.
Sundance.
Sundance, some, exactly, sundancing. That'd be fantastic. So we can have some good weather and get that all tidied up. We were notified by our Congressman Mandera Jones that he had so far preliminarily secured $1.2 million for the Halex Mills sewer district extension project. It still needs to get into the final infrastructure bill in Congress, but we are very appreciative of the Congressman for his efforts in securing this initial, these initial funds. I know that our Highway Superintendent is probably going to talk about this soon, but we did officially put in our grant application for, MWRR grant application and that's going to give us a new horizontal grinder.
Correct.
And it's been accepted and we are officially in the queue.
In the queue.
For, and that is a long queue, but at least it gives us time to financially plan for the expenditure, but we can see up to close to $300,000 in grant.
Over 300, yes.
Which is great. And also happy to report again, the Highway Superintendent taking the lead on this, but our LED streetlight program at NISEG has been completed. 284 streetlights were swapped out for LEDs throughout the Heights Hamlet, which we're very happy about. And finally, the last two items, the Granite Knowles Parkland Alienation Bill to allow for our solar canopy project has been, again, as we all know, passed by both the Senate and the Assembly and last week was delivered to the Governor's Desk for his signature. We await and hope for his signature, but we do want to thank Assemblyman Byrne and Senator Harkum for their advocacy to get this bill across the finish line. And if you're looking for something fun to do this weekend, I know you always are, Councilman Lackman.
Always.
But it is the Community Harvest over at Hilltop Hanover. They are going to have an exciting program there Saturday morning. They're going to be harvesting their potatoes and onions and it's a great, I brought my kids there over the weekend. We did some You Pick Flowers. If, you know, the botanical gardens is a ways away, but we kind of have one of our own right here. So if you're looking for something fun to do on a nice Saturday morning, please stop by Hilltop Hanover, right here in the town of Yorktown, again, located off of Hanover Street.
Get some of those potatoes, onions and get myself a nice steak. I'm all set.
There you go, exactly. This is a work session, so we will get right into our agenda here. We're going to have Phil Marino, General Foreman of our Refuge and Recycling Department in Central Garage to the podium and this is to discuss the updated vehicle policy for town, for the town.
Does everybody have a copy?
Yes, sir.
Okay. At the beginning of the year, our insurance company did an in-vet audit of our fleet and this is just one of the steps that we were taking is to update our vehicle usage policy. And it's, you know, we cover license requirements, town vehicle use, out-of-town trips, driving policies and commuting privileges for personnel. Also with the commuter privileges for personnel discussed was with the Superintendent for Highways, the Chief of Police and all the unit heads of the, of the people that are, people that report to them of taking their cars home that would benefit the town. So we had, we touched base with all of them. They gave us a list and that's the list that you see below. So, any questions?
Any questions from the board?
This policy is discussed with all the other, those who are taking the vehicle at home now?
Yes.
Yes.
There is some agreement or disagreement?
Right.
Is this by the Town Board?
So the, all the individuals who currently take a car home have been notified of the updated policies that would be put into place.
How many people would be affected?
People that would be affected, well, the list is, there are, there are a couple of people that are off the list. Some title changes we had, like on the, the last one we had, there was a, what did they have? They had, I'm looking at the wrong paper, they had a environmental superintendent which we don't have anymore and that was realistically now the R and R Foreman. There was a couple of other titles that were switched out, but basically the way we looked upon, we looked upon this with the policy was anybody commuting with a vehicle has to be an advantage to the town. You know, if you're taking a vehicle home, you're taking your vehicle home not because you're a good guy, you know, everybody's a good guy. You're taking a vehicle home to assist the town and whoever has a fleet, all unit heads are on here because if something happens, they're the first ones to report. If something happens, God forbid, in the parks or in the building, the unit head reports and from that point on, he calls in the hourly employees on who to take care of the emergency. But the, usually the town head, he's got to be on call 24/7, you know? And believe me, with Matt, you get called sometimes 24/7.
Any other questions from the Town Board?
Yeah, I just have one only because it came up. I know it doesn't apply now since you don't utilize a car. Out-of-town trips that should be authorized through written request and approval from Town Supervisor, is there, are there any restrictions on the supervisor use of a car when that's, when that's applicable?
We've really, I mean, the supervisors don't use a car now, but we really, we didn't approach that.
It's come up in the past before. People have made comments. So that's one of the reasons it sticks in my mind a little bit.
Well, maybe, you know, maybe we can put stipulation in there where he can just notify the fleet committee.
There you go.
Because it's realistically, I mean, what it is is if, if say somebody who has a fleet, say Dave or myself, and I have to bring a truck to Brooklyn to get repaired, you know?
Right.
That's where it is. You know, there's been a couple of where I was looking at other things in other towns where I went to Greenberg and I went to Austin, you know, it's, it's all, you know, just business stuff. I mean, we could add in there that the supervisor can just send an email out to the fleet committee notifying them that, you know, I'll be using your vehicle out of town.
Sure, just keep, keeps everything transparent.
Just, just for records, that's all there is, as they, you know.
Yeah, that's good.
You know, so like, like if Dave or myself had to send a vehicle.
We go to Queens all the time. Ray Minor.
You and me both, you and me both.
Well, you like those restaurants over in Flushing, the Chinese restaurants.
No, I like to get in and out. Drop the vehicle up and get out.
Real, real food.
Any other questions from the board?
I'm good. That was my one question on it.
Do we need to pass a resolution on this to formally accept it? I would imagine we would. Okay, so we can do that.
The past resolution, the past was past resolution. Also, if you're looking at the list, you will see there was a resolution passed on May 2nd, 2017 for the Water Department.
Yep.
They have, you know, they have some standby, they have, I think they're the only ones here or that have hourly employees that take the car home because standby, you know.
They're on standby in case for emergencies.
Right. They're the only department that has that. All right, so we'll get a resolution
on for next week to accept the, the policy.
What I'll do is I will add in the, if the Town Supervisor is going to go out of town, just add an email to the.
Right, I added that as well.
And then just one other thing, because you gave all this news, I got a little bit of news too. We, we received our first pickup for food waste.
Nice. How much?
I don't know yet, they weigh in.
I know someone here who dropped some stuff off, right Sarah?
We were talking. We, we made, put it this way, we made four cans into one.
Okay.
But we're, we're on the roll.
Good.
Okay.
Excellent.
Anything else?
Great job with that, by the way.
Okay.
I agree. How do you, you know, avoid the bugs in your, you know, compost, you know, because everybody wants to come and eat the sugar from your.
The lids are locked. The lids, the lids are locked. So when you push the lids down, there's a latch that locks in. Yep.
Right, there, yeah. So.
I have candy all around mine.
Right. And that's mainly all, especially for animals. Also, we've built a partition and in the front, because the trucks got to come in and lift the can, we have a chain across. So an animal can, you know, none of these cans can be knocked down and then I don't want to get a call for Jim that I messed up his parking lot.
Right.
Lower level or downing, come visit us.
And Phil, just to share, because I know my wife was, I told her where to look, but for anyone else, how can, how can you get containers for home storage of food?
If you go on our website, there's a link, there are four places that you can search during left for, for the type you want. Now, my wife wants a.
State of the art.
One that, yeah.
One that does everything for her.
Yeah, she wants one that I wanted by five garbage cans, but.
Very good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Phil. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Good job. See, when my daughter was in Germany, that's what they did. But she just, just had a garbage can that they kept, but they'd have to go every couple of days.
Yeah.
To the dump.
All right, next we're going to discuss the Northern Westchester County Wireless Master Plan. Susan Raubold is going to be here. She's been leading the cause for the participating municipalities, of which Yorktown is one. I can tell you that I've been receiving quite a few emails and, and Facebook messages about the cell service, especially on the east side of town, and how it's significantly deteriorated, especially over the past, I think, eight to 10 months. So I think there's a lot of people who are very interested in what you're going to have to say tonight and, and hopefully we can make some improvements in our, in our wireless connectivity here.
Great, thank you.
It's because the leaves are on the trees. As soon as the leaves come out, it blocks the signal.
Well, we just, we were down on one bar.
You just go ahead and click on this.
Where we closed, yeah.
Just tell, I want to know actually, just for the record, most of the people may not know exactly what the technical issue is. So just tell in the simplest language why you have a dead point and a noise, static, all kind of thing. Because when you are in the middle of something, it doesn't work, right? That's, well, that's really everybody's complaint whenever you go, you know, and the speed, you know?
I will address that. Let me, if you'll go down to the bottom right-hand corner and you see, keep going all the way down. There you go. Keep going down a little bit further and go to your left, to the left, keep going to the left, to the left, right there. If you'll click that, no, no, the other one, the screen. Okay.
Oh, that kind of works.
Well, um, let's see, we want to go to.
You want to go to full screen. If you go back to that icon, you can go to full screen.
There we go. And if you'll go ahead and click backwards. There we go. All right. All right, thank you. Reason you would get static is because your, actually, I don't know why you would get static. I'll be honest. Static on your handset. I haven't had static on my handset in a very, very long time. It used to be because your operating system was in the first or second generation of wireless. So maybe the handset is timing out. They're going to be removing all those handsets that operate on the CDMA operating platform. I haven't had a phone on that platform in a very long time, so I'm not sure. Maybe that's what's causing it.
Vishnu has a dial flip phone.
Then that would be a reason why you have static. It's operating on a.
I'm teasing you, Vishnu, I'm teasing you.
I can call anywhere in the world with my phone, okay?
Or that.
Because you have your right kind of thing. If you have 100 little gizmos open, you know, all the interference all the time, you know, and mismatch on all the devices, you know, and the weather.
But I haven't had static on mine in a long time. I'll have to look into that. I don't know. All right. So as the introduction was made, I'm Susan Raubold, Cityscape Consultants, and I'm going to be updating you on the status of the Wireless Master Plan. Next slide. As of right now, we are on the engineering mapping and analysis. If you click, the arrow should, no, if you just click, there we go. Right. There'll be a lot of clicking. Is that a remote mouse? May I use it? Okay. My computer wasn't compatible with your software and so we had to come up with the.
Thank you very much more. Appreciate it. Diana, for helping us out with this.
Thank you. Okay. So, oh heavens. Well, maybe I'm too far from your computer. I'm sorry, we're having a little technical difficulty. I apologize for this.
It's kind of like our cell phones.
Next slide, please.
Do you want the mapping in it? No, just go to the next slide.
No, just the next slide, please. All right. Just a reminder that the Wireless Communication Master Plan that we're working on is not about fiber, it's not about Wi-Fi, it's specific to your wireless handheld device and the infrastructure that's needed in order for those wireless phones, handsets to work. Next slide. I wanted to just give you some quick facts that over 49% of Americans are switching to their wireless phones and eliminating their landlines. 80% of an estimated 240 million 911 emergency calls are estimated to have come from your, from a handheld wireless device. And more and more students are getting connected with their wireless devices. And so the need for infrastructure in order for these devices to work effectively is what's driving this master plan. Next slide. The network plan requires the use of antenna that are elevated above tree lines, above rooftops, above ridge lines, and they have to communicate effectively from antenna to antenna in order for that handset to work. When you don't have enough infrastructure, that's when you run into problems with your network. The future is going to need a combination of the macro cells, which is what you have here in the community, and future small wireless facilities. We did this master plan to map out your existing infrastructure to show you a simulation of what your propagation is so that you can plan for the gaps. Cityscape does not work for a tower company. We don't own a wireless service. We don't sell services. We only are here to show you your gaps and to help you troubleshoot how you as a community want to fill those gaps. Next slide. So just to get everyone on the same page in terms of terminology, these first two images on your left are towers. They can be concealed or non-concealed. These are sites in your community that are macro cells. If a site is, if an antenna is on something other than a tower, it is called a base station. So the macro cell on the transmission line, those antennas are considered a base station and the base stations can be concealed or non-concealed, like the church steeple that you have here on your site, which is Y2. Next slide. Future small wireless facilities are much smaller. They're typically 50 feet or less in height. The antenna is smaller. There are two small wireless facilities that have deployed in Somers, S4 and S5 in the inventory. We expect to see more of that transition through the Northern Westchester County over the next 10 years. And then the image on the right is just another type of antenna that can be concealed at the top. So the S4 and S5 are non-concealed because you can plainly see those antenna. The other site that's shown, shows what a casing looks like around that, so it doesn't look so much like an infrastructure for wireless. Next slide, please. So I want to get right to the mapping. If, next slide, please. We start off by looking at the entire study area, which is the seven communities. The seven communities that we're mapping and doing the master plan for includes a total of 95 wireless facilities, both inside the jurisdictional boundaries and in a one-mile perimeter around that boundary. Next slide. Yorktown has a total of 12 towers within your limits presently and you have a total of six base stations. And then your study area, which includes the one-mile perimeter, includes a total of 26 personal wireless service facilities. We include the sites in the one-mile perimeter because they do have an impact on the propagation pattern within your community. If we left them out, it would be an incomplete image of what you have. Next slide, please. By location, you have, most of your sites are on, well, actually almost half. Half of your sites are on private property, then you have four on public property and five in utility easements. So you have a diversification of where your sites are located. Next slide. And most of the sites are, are non-concealed. So you have 15 sites are non-concealed. So the vast majority are not concealed. Next slide. Next slide. And the simulated propagation maps that I'm getting ready to show you are making some assumptions. One, we're using a generic antenna model that works for all service providers because the exact propagation model and output and the beam tilt, that's all proprietary information that we don't have access to. And I want to just remind everyone, we're not trying to pinpoint exactly the level of service that you have in each area. We're really wanting to focus on the gaps. It's easy to look at where the color is and say, oh, but I think, I think it should be over on the other side of the street. I'm not really so concerned, I'm more concerned with where the coverage is not and how you're going to fill that. The, next slide, please. And you're just going to click away. Well, it's going to fade in a number of things. So if you'll just keep clicking. The maps that we use are color variations to demonstrate the level of coverage from a site. If it is yellow, if you see yellow on that map, that shows how the antenna propagation from those particular towers and base stations are penetrating buildings. So yellow represents where you should have in-building coverage with your handsets. The yell, the, the green is in-vehicle. So if you're traveling, you should have coverage in vehicle. Where you have the blue and the purple, that's mostly just outdoor coverage. And where there is no coloration, those are your biggest gaps. Next slide. And, no, that's fine. That's fine. I could talk forever on just that one image. Let's just keep going. So let's zoom in now and take a look at Yorktown. These, this is the coverage that we, your simulated coverage from all of your sites in and surrounding Yorktown. And you can see right away, straight away, that eastern side that you're probably talking about that has a large gap in coverage and we're showing it on the map.
The top right corner, and it kind of drops as a, you do see you get some of it, but there's also a lot of, a lot of white there.
Right. And we'll, we'll talk more about that. Next slide, please. So in the, and go ahead and just click on that. It'll enlarge a little bit if you click.
It's like lakes.
So if you look at the sites Y1 and Y2, they're providing a pretty good coverage to the northeast corner, but you do have gaps around Y1. A lot of that's from your topography. And then Y3 and Y4, you want to see a pretty good handoff between those sites. So it's nice that you have pretty good coloration and no gaps in between those. It shows that you have a pretty good handoff. But the handoff to the south is not very good because the sites are spaced too far from, apart.
Right.
Next slide. Again, and you can click again, it'll zoom up. There we go. And so when you zoom in to sort of the middle section, you'll see how Y5 and 6 do not hand off very good to Y7 and 3 and 4 don't hand off to 7 or 8. Probably, well, in large part, there's topography issues there and also distance. And the only way you remedy that is to put more infrastructure in to fill those gaps. Next slide, please.
They don't play well together.
Yeah.
It's like a Starbucks coffee, you have everywhere, you know, so many.
Well, if, if you want to have a complete coverage and a robust network, that's what you would have to, that's what you would have to do.
So what kind of new antenna you have right now? The transmitter and a radio, you know, the antenna and the radio signal communication on the same tower, everything?
Yes, you want to have as many service providers on the same facility as possible. This is assuming that the same service provider is on every facility because if you want to promote co-location, then you want to maximize the use of the existing infrastructure. So you might look at that map and say, well, I live over near Y5 and 6 and I don't have any coverage like that. And you might not because your service provider might not be on those towers. We're assuming that this is the best build-out you would have if all the providers were on each facility.
How are you going to bring them together, everybody?
They decide when they want to come in, but the main thing is if you, if you had, well, let's go to the next slide. And so now, as you start to look southward, south of Y7 and 8, there is no coverage. And that's, that's, that's an example of even if you had a tower there, if you had a tower there and people would, and they were all on it, then you might fill that in. But the fact is, there's nothing there. And so that's where you need to concentrate your effort. Let the industry figure out when they're going to go to those other sites. At least they're there and they can co-locate on them. The areas that I want you to focus on or draw your attention to are where there is no coloration because there's no options there right now for the industry to go. And that, those are the areas you'll need to address. Next slide, please.
Can I just ask you a question?
Sure.
So you see, like, right here underneath Y7, it starts like, almost like, like polka dots?
Right.
What does, what does that tell you? Because you do have some white, but they look like a bunch of islands.
Those, that's pixelation because of topography and terrain.
Okay.
And probably ambientry height.
Mm-hmm.
Because the model considers all, takes into all of those considerations as variables, which causes it to do that. Now, if you had a site in the middle of 7 and 8, then it would probably be solid yellow across there.
Oh, I got you. Okay.
And, you know, all the different phone, they are not, they don't have, you know, standard specs, you know?
Right.
So, you know, it's really, they don't get along with each other, you know? They want to make sure they, you know, mine is better than yours.
Get a one with one.
Basically like that, you know? How do you bring together? Because this is really the key of, you know, not having a good signal, you know?
Well, one of the things that you do is you address that through your policies and you invite them in and you create paths of least resistance to have them deploy and build out their network in a way that meets your goals and objectives from a visual perspective, but then rewards them with an expedient review process is really how you bring them in. That's been our experience over the years. But we'll talk more about that with the legal piece at our next meeting.
So just a real quick, just from a safety point of view, is this including the First Net Channel 14 or Band 14?
This is only your AT&amp;T's Verizon Sprint's T-Mobiles. Does not take into consideration public safety except for the fact that most, that 80% of the E911 calls across the nation came in through a mobile phone device.
Right. So, okay.
Yeah.
But First Net wouldn't be part of.
Well, AT&amp;T's First Net is part of this, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So that means that those, those gaps are very dangerous.
They are. Mm-hmm. Next slide, please. Okay, I've already talked about that. So we can just go ahead. I know there's lots of animation. Next slide. I'm sorry you're having to do this. And again, as we work further south, the farther south you go, the more gaps in coverage you have. The northern part of the township has far better coverage than the southern part. Next slide, please. And then again, the southeast and southwest corners both have gaps.
Yeah.
And next slide. And next slide. So in summary, there are about six gaps in the northern part of the town where if you'll just click, all those different circles will start to show up that we've identified. where, if you'll just click, all those different circles will start to show up that we've identified. If you click six. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. There we go, just click away. And you'll see six areas that are identified as spots that we think where you're going to need to address the gaps. And then, as we look to the south side, or the south, southern half, I should say, of the town. Next slide, please. And you can just click away there. You have considerable areas, especially along your thoroughfares, where, you know, if there were an accident on your thoroughfare roadways through there, there'd be very difficult communications. That's fine, that's fine. So, I want to talk now about capacity. Everything that I've talked about right now is just coverage. The network has another half to it, and that's the capacity. The network can only handle a certain number of simultaneous calls simult, at the same time. And the coverage area will start to shrink as more and more subscribers are using it. So even though it looks like there is really good coverage in some of these areas, the capacity may have such an effect that it makes there be coverage gaps. So one of the first things we look at is the population density. And as you see on this overall map of the seven communities, Yorktown, Mount Kisco, parts of Somers and Bedford, have the greatest amounts of density by population. And when you look at the map, you'll see that that's where there's a lot of infrastructure because that is where the industry wants to go first. They want to get to where the subscribers are and where the thoroughfares are. Next slide, please. But when we look specifically at Yorktown, and you look at where your population density is, you have certain census blocks that have over three thousand people per square mile. And there's no way that a single facility like Y2 could accommodate that amount of subscriber base up in the northeast. North, right, northeast.
Yep.
So, in addition to the population density, next slide, please. We also take into consideration the land use. Okay, so we identify, we're targeting areas that. I'm sorry. It's a little awkward doing it this way, but it's fine. So the circle areas we're identifying where your capacity issues are probably going to be relative to your population densities. And then we compare your population density map to your land use classification. We took the information from the tax assessor's office that identifies an associated land class, whether it's residential, commercial, undeveloped, parkland. And, because sometimes an area will show that it's not very, there's not very much density, but you look at it, and it's like, "Oh, my gosh, it's a huge commercial area." So people aren't living there, but it's a big commercial area. And so that's going to need more infrastructure because you've got a lot of people coming there because of the commercial. Or it'll show that there's a lot of residential, but there's a huge park there as well. And so that explains why it's showing up as low density. We take all of that information and we put it through our modeling, and we come up with yet one more map that addresses capacity, and that's the next slide, which shows yellow or green to red, if you'll just keep clicking. This is showing how even areas that have really good coverage, based on your numbers of subscribers, based on your capacity, your commercial areas, the shrinkage of the network, how certain areas within the community will still need more sites, even if they appear to have good coverage. So the area in red is our target areas where you have infrastructure now, but you're going to need a lot more in that area just to address the capacity. So don't just get stuck looking at the coverage maps because it's really the capacity map that drives your gap, the gap analysis in the end. Where there is no coloration, it's because there's no capacity because there's no sites. So it's showing the areas that aren't colored are your biggest gaps. And then areas in red and orange are areas of great concern into the future. These maps are good for ten years.
Right.
And you can work, using these maps to plan out your ten-year build-out.
And the, and the residents that I heard most recently from that red blob on the right that then goes up, that's where they all are?
Mm-hmm.
That explains it.
That's a capacity issue. So coverage makes it look like it's really good, but when you add in all these other variables,
Yeah.
you've got a capacity problem. Okay, so the next slide is to zoom in just a little bit to that area so you can see it a little bit better. And.
And you said the only way to fix it is by adding more infrastructure.
More infrastructure, yes. And it may not, and, and the solution may not be more macro cells. It may be, it may be more macro cells. It may be combination macro cell and small wireless.
And so how do we determine that?
It's it's driven by the industry. And how they want to approach filling in the gap. I just prepare you to know that it's going to be probably a combination of both. So, you, as you look to the future and your expectations, it's probably going to be a combination of both.
Okay.
So the next step, if you'll click on the next slide. Oh, okay, then we're looking to the south. Just click away. Okay. The next step that we want to invite you to participate in is a wire, is a community wireless survey, a poll. And we want to hear back from the community on their experience with their coverage and capacity for a couple of reasons. One, we want to take that information and compare it to our maps to make sure we don't need to tweak our model and to address maybe some things that we may not have picked up on because we don't live here, so we rely on community input. And second of all, as you look to fill in the gaps, it's helpful to hear what the community will support. And then we'll compare that with your policies in place now to see if the zoning ordinance may need to get tweaked to address some of these concerns that the citizenry have. And we'll also look at it on a large scale to see if there's any synergies on development preferences that might be adoptable on the northern county region basis.
Okay.
So, let's say, for example, you and Bedford and Somers, the citizenry all have similar concerns, that maybe collectively, all three of the communities have some of similar policies in place so that you don't have a change of infrastructure, like, right at the town line.
Makes sense.
So if you'll click on the link for the wireless, oh, back to that last slide. Let's see if we can just get to the last slide. There we go, backwards.
Let me go forwards?
Or if, maybe if you click on the icon to, in the middle, to the left, I think it'll let you go, if you click there, will it let you go to the last slide from there? Go to slide, mm-hmm, if you'll scroll all the way down and go to the very last slide, community poll. And if you click on the words, Yorktown Wireless Infrastructure, it should take you to the actual online poll that's ready for you to launch, and as soon as you, you're, you're ready to. We recommend that you run it for two to three weeks.
Okay.
And we'll calculate, oh, it's not taking you there. Update your browser. Well, let me just explain. There's two parts to the poll. The first part is asking people to share their experience with their existing handsets and infrastructure. Do they live here? Do they work here? Do they live and work here? Who's their service provider? We ask them to rate their service where they live and where they work, if it's different places. And then the second half of the survey, or the poll, gives exact examples of the infrastructure. We ask them to pick what they like and what they don't like. That's how we take that information back and say, "Okay, well, nobody likes," this is hypothetical. You know, some polls reveal that nobody wants a lattice tower in their township or their community anymore. So you can actually put in your ordinance that you only permit monopoles if it's going to be non-concealed. Some communities come back and they say, "Well, we really like the concealed tree." And if you're going to do a concealed facility, we want it to be a tree. And so you can actually build that into your ordinance as a first preference if it's, or the flag pole. Some communities like the flag pole. Or just, so you can take that information that comes from the polls and build that into your, your ordinance.
Right.
We have a mechanism in place that only one e, one response per email. We're going to ask everyone to be honest and only fill out the poll once. But, you know, if, if they had a hundred emails, they could do a hundred responses. But we're asking them to just do one. And once all the information is put together, we will call it together and give you the first draft of your master plan with policy recommendations.
Excellent.
So how much you can download, how fast, at what cost? Because, you know, they're, the money and the speed, they go more money and more speed, you know?
Well, that, that is in the, that's not in our purview. That's, that's proprietary information that each service provider has. Well, they'll only tell you what they want you to know. And I can't, I can't verify that information because it's proprietary. And again, we don't work for those providers. We don't work for AT&amp;T. We don't work for Verizon. We're bringing you the information so that you can base some decisions going forward on how you're going to address your gaps.
I had a question on density. Does it matter 3G, 4G, 5G? Or is it all that, you know, whatever you're using is going to affect the density equally?
So, 3G is going away. And within the next twelve months, you'll, everyone will only have access to 4G and 5G and forward. And the density, it does affect the amount of coverage and capacity a provider can give to the network. It's all about the bandwidth. So 5G is all about the bandwidth, so it's going to place more strain on the 4G-based network, which is why they need more infrastructure to increase the bandwidth. And sites will have to be closer together. There have to be more of them. And as you move into 6G, it's all about more bandwidth at faster speeds. And again, you'll have to have more infrastructure to fill in those gaps.
Do we have any idea when 6G is expected to be deployed?
No.
About a week after 5G.
They'll start.
Soon as you get a new phone.
They're going to start marketing that they've got it, but I'm telling you right now, there's very little 5G actually deployed.
Okay.
It's all 5G-enabled. So they're building infrastructure to enable 5G. And there are very small pockets in the United States that have 5G that are being tested right now. But it's not a universal platform as of yet.
Yeah, well, Apple's, Apple's moving all their phones to 5G. Every one of them.
Pardon me?
Apple is, Apple is moving all of their new phones to 5G. So, they better get, better get cracking.
That's right.
My question is, how many billion to cover that much? What you show, the high-speed 5G, you know, reception to each and every, because there are mix and match devices, you know? You know, this company's phone has their proprietary technology, and the other one. How are you going to make all to talk to each other? And, you know, it is very complicated because there's proprietary information and everything you see, you know? And, oh, everybody want to make money.
That's right. Now, that's, that's part of their marketing and their, their individual engineers that design their networks.
Right.
And they are fighting.
Oh, sure enough.
Stock market go up.
Yes, they are.
Well, it, it will help, you know? But this is the one for those who have a need, you know? Everybody don't have the same need other than the business, you know?
That is right.
So that, they can afford and they can have their services.
That's right. And then you, as a community, decide how and if you want to promote filling in those gaps.
Susan, if people have questions, this is a work session, and I'm sure people have a lot of questions. What's the best way to get those questions answered by you? Can they, can they contact you some way?
Absolutely.
Should they contact the?
It would be great if they would contact the town.
Okay.
And then you send them to me and
Great.
maybe ask that they come in in the next X number of days. Send me a list, and then I'll respond to all of them at one time.
That'd be great, yeah.
That would be most efficient.
Yep, that'd be perfect. So if anyone has any questions about Susan's presentation, whether here or watching at home, please feel free to email any of the town board members, town board members or the town clerk. You can email me directly at mslader@yorktownmy.org, and I'll get the questions over to Susan, and you can provide those answers, and we'll get back to everybody.
Sure. And then when you post the survey, we recommend you post the presentation with it.
Absolutely.
So that they can follow along the presentation as they answer the survey.
Yep, and we'll include the video probably as well of your presentation.
All right, great.
Okay? Thank you so much, Susan. Appreciate all the help. It's great. I love that it's, we're doing it as a, as a region too, which is, I think, really important as well. Okay, we're going to bring up John Taggert to discuss a proposed CBDG, CDBG grant. Actually, it's grant twice.
CBDG.
You know, even though we started way, we're almost on time.
Don't jinx me.
If we can move John along.
Don't jinx me. All right, Mr. Taggert, I know that you're going to present to the board specifics on a sidewalk grant that we qualified for. I think it would be very helpful if you can, because we had some questions at our last town board meeting, courtesy of the floor, to maybe just quickly explain to our residents how the town qualifies for this particular funding stream and why here. I think that's, that's the biggest question that we, that we got at our last town board meeting.
Sure. So CDBG is community development block grants. Very old program. Been around probably over forty years, I believe, maybe fifty. And what, there's several ways to be eligible, but what we utilize most often is census data that is tabulated by block group. And that indicates the median income of the, the average median income of the area. And that is what qualifies a particular area delineated by block group to receive this grant money. Right now, in this cycle, which is twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four, that's what we're coming into. The area that is eligible is up in the northern part of town, at the northernmost town line. It is bounded on the east by the town line with Somers. It's bounded on the west by Mill Street. Generally bounded on the south by Route 6. It includes, believe it or not, Jefferson Valley Mall. And then there is a finger that moves south across Route 6 all the way down to London Road and sort of bisects parts of Jefferson Village. So there are two projects that we're looking at. One is Lee Boulevard, one is Hill Boulevard. I can tell you the Hill Boulevard one is just inside the eligible area, and it is a public sidewalk.
So just to be clear, so there's no correlation between our eligibility for these types of grants and projects and any proposed or no longer proposed developments?
In no way, shape, or form.
Thank you.
Yeah. So I, I gave you in your packets, I did give you the map that I just described as the eligible area. I gave you two project narratives for each project, which I will not read to you. You can do that at your leisure. I gave you a number of photographs, and then I gave you two maps, which I would like to concentrate on. And if Maura can put up the one that she had up a moment ago, that one. The first one is, is Lee Boulevard. And you can see there that that is Lee Boulevard, and you can see Bank Street. Where the cursor is right now is the Commerce Bank. And then if you move down south a little bit, right there, that, you see the yellow line? That is the extent of the sidewalk, which goes from the, what was, I think it's a Shell station still. It crosses the driveway of where Jefferson Valley Bagels are, goes to the corner of Bank, and then continues around Down Bank, all the way down to where it will meet the driveway that was for Toys R Us. That is a missing piece of sidewalk. You can see in the aerial that around Commerce, Commerce Bank, there are sidewalks. There are sidewalks that come from Route 6 and traverse the front of the Shell station. But they end, and that section I just described to you has no sidewalk. So, being in the eligible area, we felt that it was an appropriate project to link all the sidewalks. That picture that you have in your package is the end of the sidewalk in front of Shell. That is the. That is the area that has no sidewalk right now that goes in front of
There's a bus stop.
Strip Mall. There is a bus stop there, which is another good reason to provide a good walking surface. These are the corner of um Bank and Lee.
Yep.
And one view goes looks down Bank. You can see there's a small diagonal sidewalk that comes into the plaza, but that's about it. The estimate for this um project, the bank of the Lee and Bank sidewalk is eighty-two thousand four hundred and fifty with an allowance for contingency of fourteen eight, which brings the total project estimate to ninety-seven thousand two hundred and ninety-one dollars, of which fifty percent would be our match. And if you would kindly move to the next one. The next project sidewalk project is on Hill Boulevard. And as you can see, on the lower left is the mall entrance road from Hill. So across the street from that, you'll see the last entrance into the parking lot that serves Jefferson Village near the tennis court. There is a sidewalk, an existing asphalt sidewalk uh that is in very poor condition that connects Village Road with that parking lot. And you have pictures in your package that are the this which show a lot of patching going on. It's in terrible shape and warrants replacement. And rather than have Mr. Paganelly and his forces try to skin that cat, we're trying to help here uh to get that removed and replaced with a concrete sidewalk, which will be much more durable and much safer for a longer period of time, and the highway department will have not have to pay as much attention to it. Uh the project cost for this is fifty-two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars with an uh contingency allowance of nine thousand four hundred, which brings the total to sixty-one thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars, of which the town match would be fifty percent of that. Each of these projects are anticipated to, if we are awarded the money, to take place in twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three. I believe, working from poor memory, that the twenty-twenty-two one would be the Lee Boulevard one. Um but I have to verify that with you. I did not bring that information. I apologize. And that is essentially what we're doing.
So let me just say something. If you increase the cultivation from town, then you can get it, because this may not be a guarantee that you can get this CDBG grant. But if you say maybe you put fifty percent or whatever, then it's very good chance.
Yeah, the minimum is fifty percent in this round. It used to be lower, and we we did that. We would go higher than the minimum, but now the minimum for these grants throughout Westchester for the Urban County Council, which is what we're part of, is fifty percent for any grant, so.
That means we are rich then, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, well, that's another problem, you know?
Uh the reason for that is there's not a lot of money to go around, so the Urban Council put those um restrictions on.
John, when was the last time we applied for and received the CDBG?
In the last round, we applied for a senior van, which we were awarded the grant. We have not yet received the money.
When was that? When was that application put in? Do you have any recollection?
Let's see, twenty-one. Uh probably twenty-nineteen or twenty-eighteen.
So tell the residents.
And that that was, by by the way, I'm sorry, that was a that was a um that period was coming off of a of a near ten-year period when there were no CDBG grants.
Right.
So it was much less money, and the area that was eligible was different from the one I described.
Correct.
And which is one of the reasons that in that area, we found no projects, so we went with only the the senior van.
So when we when we applied for the grant, I think everyone uh who actively pays attention to local government understands and recognizes that there are requirements and prerequisites for this type of money. Did we meet all those requirements and prerequisites when we applied in eighteen and nineteen? To the best of our knowledge.
To the best of our knowledge, we did save the issue, which is an evolving issue of the model affordable housing law. So when we applied for this, we did not and still do not have a model affordable housing law. But at certainly at that time, there was not some of the documentation that has come forth recently.
Mm-hmm.
So the um there was not hard and fast rules in that in that moment as to whether or not we should and could apply and receive that money.
Mm-hmm.
So that is an evolving situation, so. In terms of um ha- signing IMAs and so forth, we did all of all of that.
We signed an IMA with?
With the Urban County Council, which is makes us eligible to participate in the Westchester County CDBG program, which carries all of the other requirements along with it that we've.
And that was part of the grant application for the senior van?
That's correct.
Okay.
And the the federal grant is different than than a county.
In terms of the requirements?
Yes.
No. Any federal money carries the same requirements as the the CDBG project uh program, because CDBG is also federal money. Often, money that comes through the state is can be federal money as well. Sometimes it's administered by the state. In this case, this is money that is given to the county to administer to the to the municipalities with its within its boundaries. Um so it's not directly from the federal government, but it is necessarily federal money that carries the same requirements as if you went directly to the federal government for a grant. A couple of years ago, while we were also looking at the CDBG van, we did apply directly to a federal program, and we won a grant for two vans, which we were awarded the money. We executed the contracts, purchased the vans, and were um
When was that?
We received that money. Only a few years ago, a couple of years ago.
But let me ask you something else.
We did that because at the time, the CDBG program was on ice, essentially. We need advance for the seniors.
So is there any string attached to it? Like every milestone has a free cheese of
Right. The strings, yeah.
Piece of cheese is attached, okay?
The strings are that, for instance, there's um you know, you have to comply with federal fair housing laws, anti-discrimination laws, there's some Title IX things that you have to comply with, ADA. All of that goes along with any federal money in all of the states in in the in the country, in the United States.
So, John, this project, two projects, I should say.
Yeah.
Costs about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so we have to book up about half of that.
Seventy-nine.
About seventy-nine thousand?
Yep.
To be exact, and two hundred and something dollars.
Thank you.
Do you have a question?
That 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 was that was my question. That's uh
You know, I think the fact of the matter is, uh as we've learned, and Adam Rodriguez, our town attorney, can chime in on this. Uh but what we're starting, what we're seeing, and it's something that the town and the town board really need to put our heads together on, whether it's CDBG, Hallicks Mill, ARA, um basically anything we've seen thus far, except from the state, and that could change. They all have prerequisites and requirements that we need to address. Most of them we do, some of them we don't. I'm not so much concerned about trying to find a hundred and fifty thousand, a little bit more.
Seventy-nine, two hundred was our end.
Right, yeah.
But it's gotta be paid in advance, correct?
Yes.
And then it's reimbursable.
Correct, it's reimbursable, so we have to lay out the whole money, which is again, I'm not so much concerned about finding a way for the town to front this money, and not just front the money, but to spend the money on this type of project. I'm more worried about the ten million for the Hallicks Mill Sewer District.
The one point one.
The one point two that was allocated by Congressman Jones and has to get through that full process. The three point eight from the American Recovery Act. I mean, that that's a lot of money that we're gonna tell taxpayers.
Hundred and thirty for the beast.
Well, yeah, yours, right? Right? Which well, again, we haven't seen from the state the same level of
And the reappropriated money for the highway, you know, fixing the
For yours, yeah, right. That's another half a million, that's another seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um unfortunately, we're on the receiving end of the rules of engagement here, so I I again, the one fifty, I'm not worried about. I think that with the help of our comptroller, we can probably figure out a way to make some magic and and do this ourselves.
She's she's not looking up.
No, I know. It's okay. She's texting me angry faces, but.
For the other fifteen point seven, five million.
But it's the other fifteen point seven that we have to figure out a solution to. Uh Ms. Rodriguez was intimately involved in this uh when he worked for the county attorney's office. Uh I don't know if you wanna shed some light from your perspective?
Yeah, sure. So on the one point two million dollars, I couldn't say. I don't know what the funding source is. I mean, it's federal, but we don't, I don't know what I I don't know yet. We'll find out. Um money coming from the state, from the feds, um you know, under the Recovery Act. We haven't seen the requirements. We don't really know. On the CDBG funds, the direct CDBG funds, um and the money coming for Hallicks Mill through an IMA, non-CDBG funds, we we do know, I think, pretty pretty clearly, at least what some of the requirements will be. Um and the requirements are that the town will have to affirm really further fair housing within its borders, which has you know, a certain statutory definition, but we have a pretty good sense of of what that will probably encompass. I mean, I we have CDBG agreements from the county. I don't think we, I haven't seen the one for the sidewalks, but in terms of you know, the agreement for the van, uh the requirements were, uh I I mean, I can read them. Um here's one, for example. Uh banning local residency requirements and preferences and other selection preferences that do not affirmatively further fair housing for all housing developments approved after the date of disagreement, et cetera, et cetera. Number two, offer the county a right of first refusal uh to retain and or purchase any and all land acquired in REM to be used for housing that affirmatively further fares house fare affirmatively furthers fair housing. And three, use reasonable efforts to affirmatively further fair housing through the municipality's land use regulations and other affirmative measures to assist development of affordable housing, such as promotion of inclusionary zoning. I interpret that essentially to mean that the county would uh expect us to adopt some version of its model ordinance, which has an inclusionary zoning requirement. That requirement is also going to be in the IMA for the Hallicks Mill money. We know that. Um there's, you know, what 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 version of the model ordinance would be acceptable is is, you know, a separate question. Um you know, there are documents that suggest that the inclusionary requirement might be negotiable. I mean, it's it's not clear at this point. We don't know. Um but you know, those those are the big the big conditions.
Correct. And those are things that I think the town board is gonna have to put our heads together on.
Yeah.
And and make a determination of how we wanna address it. Again, I'm not I I'm not the one, the hunt, this these projects here, I think we can find a path forward on our own. But the solution that they need for these, it's the same solution, potential solutions that we're gonna need for the fifteen, more than fifteen million dollars for that that we're getting from other sun- uh other funding sources.
Yeah.
So let me just say, this is a flat tire. You can fix it with the, you know, little uh you know, tire changing. And then the other one, you need the whole car, whole new car, you know? Not just just a compare simple example.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
So this is not a simple thing, you know?
No.
You have to be really telling the people at here and at home what's going on or how we are going to, you know, afford it or how we are going to proceed it to moving this project forward.
Well, I mean
If you're a good father of people, you go, you know?
Well, if we go back to Hallicks Mill, right? And and our town clerk's been very helpful in this, but if we go back to Hallicks Mill, we know it has to get approved by the state comptroller. And right now, we're already above that threshold.
Yeah.
And that's with ten million dollars in our pocket. If we say no to the ten million dollars, that project's not getting done, period. There's no way.
Vishnu can write a check.
Vishnu can write a check? You can write a check and cover it?
I I have a blank check.
Well, you need a pen?
The problem is the county and the feds, they dangle the carrot. And uh you know, we have to make, we have to make hard choices and decisions here, and and like I say, without that ten million, it's not getting done, period, the end.
No.
Um but there are avenues that we're going to work on to see if the county will accept that to um incentivize us to incentivize them, I guess, would be the would is 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 probably the easiest way to put it.
Negotiations, yep.
John, how much time do we have to decide on on this particular item? Because we're
Well, the requirement is to do a public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
So if we can reschedule that and get that done, um they will go through the process of looking at all of the applications, not just ours. And you can pull them depending on your decision at any time, prior prior to award, obviously.
So we can still put the application in.
Yeah.
But but rescind that application depending on what transpires down the road?
Yes.
How quickly do they process those applications in your in your?
Not gonna get, we're not gonna hear about awards until January.
Glacier speed.
Okay. What do you, what is the town board feel?
It may be in the fall. Uh again, it's been a couple of cycles that have not taken place. So it uh the earliest we'll hear would be mid-late fall, but I believe if I recall proper uh correctly, it's in January, so.
So set the hearing, and like like you said, you know, what if it comes down to it, we could always
We can always rescind the application.
Yeah.
Either that or we concentrate on the big dollars, and let's get our ducks in a row, and we'll take care of this on our own if we have to.
It's on a it's on a need basis, it's just, you know?
You know, we need the sewers up there for those folks.
Priorities and the need, you know, how many people gonna use whatever the project we do, you know?
Well, I'll say from from my point of view, I I think that the that sidewalk over by Jefferson Village, you know, that's that's pretty important. You know, some of the older people don't have great footing, and you know, if they wanna go walk over towards the mall or down to down the end, uh
And get to the end.
Huh?
It ends like forty feet before the end. It's the sidewalk to nowhere.
But some people walk from like the, if they're in those earlier, those uh those units right there, they'll walk to the JOC.
To the, yeah, to the JOC.
And you know, it's very dangerous. I I know London has that same issue. So you know, I hear about that quite often.
Well, why don't, so then I think it would be an opportunity, though, for also the residents of Jefferson Village to tell us whether or not they feel it's a priority, since they're the ones who are gonna be directly impacted.
Well, what's your alternative?
The alternative is to keep
No, say the alternative is either we put the sidewalks in or we pave Hill Boulevard. You're spending money, right? So there has to be an alternative that you could spend that money on. That's all I'm saying. So and you know me, I'm kind of into paving, you know, a little bit.
You? Never do that.
Oh, go figure. But you know.
You have to remember that that sidewalk is there.
Yes.
So if you do pave the road, pave the sidewalk.
Okay.
You can use asphalt again, but it needs a little fix.
Well, look, I'm dealing with enough asphalt sidewalks in Yorktown that were approved for the last thirty years.
I got you.
Makes me ill.
Yeah, that's why when we saw this one, we figured good candidate at at any rate.
Agreed.
Set a a public hearing, it it, you know, as far as that goes and hear what the people have to say about it. Like I say, if we wanted to do that project, we could pay for that out of
Absolutely.
Wherever we had to pay for it.
This isn't the project that I'm worried about.
The one I'm the one I'm main cons- mainly concerned about in getting our verbiage and so forth down down pat
Is the Hallicks Mill.
Is the Hallicks Mill and that ten and the three point eight and the one point
One point two.
One point two.
That, yeah. Those are different conversations than this one.
Yeah, this one, you know, we could do this, and it would it would impact the folks over in Jefferson Village greatly if they had a nice little sidewalk there, but we could do that for them.
Mm-hmm, right.
We don't need that money to do that for them. It would be nice to have.
Right.
I will never throw away money thrown at me, but at what cost?
Yeah.
I understand.
Yep, understood. Sorry, so uh are we able to set the public hearing? I know that we had already Yeah, I think that probably makes sense.
Okay.
Then we can hear what the public has to say. I mean, Jefferson Village may say, no, we love our sidewalk the way it is.
What what date? What date? Third?
August third.
Could we push it because I will be out of town?
It's canceled, Adam.
I don't have a problem with it.
Which might be better.
I mean, I'd like to be here in person for it.
Yeah.
We might be better off at the work session anyway. Might only, I know.
Yeah, all right, so let's let's make
Because we have the outdoor meeting.
Oh, it's true. It's the outdoor meeting on the third anyway. All right, so let's make a motion uh to set the public hearing, uh reschedule the public hearing for August tenth.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any pose? Motion carries. Mr. Taggert, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Appreciate it. Thanks for your efforts on this. Okay. We're gonna bring up our highway superintendent?
I don't have any videos or anything.
Oh, do you want pictures? You don't have a You don't have a picture book?
Okay, so I'll be very, very brief. Okay? There's good news as always. There's bad news. There's good news.
There's always good news. There's always bad news.
Right. So the good news is we have been milling, not milling, been grinding wood up on the hill. Okay, and this is-
You took me up there. I saw the tub grinder.
Quite something, right?
Awesome.
Yeah, wood flying all over the place. That being said, that is being reimbursed by the federal government as a FEMA declaration from Isaiah's last August. So we've ground up about, hmm, 10,000 yards. Okay, right now, we're sitting on, with what we had up there stockpiled, sitting on approximately 13,000 yards of mulch. Which mostly the residents aren't going to take that much mulch.
Right.
You know, in the next 50 years. So that being said, I'm here to, I don't know what the proper terminology is, get your blessing, you know, make you aware of, that I have to get rid of that material on the hill. That's a DEC-regulated facility. I can't store that much material up there. So I want to, I'm going to advertise in the Penny Saver. Okay? For a minimum amount of pickup and we will load them and let people take it away. The only question I have at this point, and I like to try to start out by charging something for it. Okay? Whether it's a single grind or a double grind, you know, I've been asking around, seeing what people are getting. My feeling is if we have 13,000 yards up there and we get $2 yard, it's $26,000. Covers the cost of loading and what have you.
Yep.
So we took over the payment on all the permits on the hill from refuse and recycling. So we have credit card machine. We have
Right.
capability to process payments and issue permits that people could pick up material. So that's my plan.
I have a request for four or five cubic yard for the-
I'm afraid that's going to cost you, that's going to cost you $8. Or one cup of coffee at Starbucks.
No, no, no.
Well, he's writing the 10 million check. I'll buy him the mulch. I'll pick up the mulch.
I give a coffee even if you don't ask me.
Now, we'll have, we'll have plenty of mulch. And then the second part of this equation would be the, the one product on the hill that has real value is the leaf mulch. All right? The leaf mulch has value to the point of somewhere between $10 and $15 cubic yard. And we have about 1,000 to 1,500 cubic yards of that. But that we want to make sure of our residents have access to because that's the most popular and we also use that to make topsoil. So.
So thank you for bringing all the time, little, little, you know?
Yep, no problem.
Could we mix some of the grindings in with the mulch?
Leaf mulch?
Which would-
What, the millings?
No, 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 no. The, the leaf mulch.
Thought you were losing it.
With the wood, with the wood, with the wood chips. Mix some of that in with that. Maybe it would incentivize the growth of grass and so on and so forth.
Well, it would, you know, but it would have to be the double hammered because the single hammered is, you know, pieces-
Order too big.
This big, yeah. But we actually have been creating topsoil by screening out the spoil pile and then adding in the leaf mulch to it, about a 30 to 70% mix. Which is a good, it's a good topsoil.
Good.
So, okay.
Mr. Rodriguez, anything that, any action the town board has to take?
Do I need anything legally to be able to sell this material? Because there was always a, there was a foregone urban myth that because we had received the Beast as a grant, which now we've, you know, been approved for another grant for a new Beast, that, oh, no, the Beast got, was done with a grant and you couldn't sell the material. When I had a meeting with the DEC, they said, no, the best thing for us in the world is you take that a full cycle from, you know, cradle to grave, that you take that material, it's useless, that you turn it into something you make money for your taxpayers on, and that's a home run. I mean, unless you see something as you order.
I don't, I don't see any problem with it. When, when did this, when did we get the, the Beast?
20 years ago. Hence the need for a new Beast.
I, I think you're fine.
Okay.
But you know, before the town used to, you know, deliver sometime with a small amount of money?
No, the town delivered, that was when the hill was being used for the processing of the sewerage.
Oh, okay.
Okay? And that was a very, when I was on the board, which was what, eight years ago? That, at that point, we determined that it was better to take that sewerage out, cart it out, than it was to try and create some sort of a safe product from it because it was a real time and material, heat and what have you scenario, which was very complicated. And then people were putting, you know, sewage in their gardens.
No, no, no.
Right. That's not good. You know, which wasn't so good. You're the master gardener. I came out, I came out down to the bike path at, on Sunday at about, what time was it? 7:30 in the morning?
I was six o'clock.
I thought I'd be the only person there. He beat me there. He was already gardening over, over at Patriot, Patriot Park.
You know, the, the turtle, you know, the, the water snapping turtle has created a big mess.
The turtle.
A lot of holes, you know? And we can use your little one truckload of-
Sure. So if anybody has any idea, some of you have, you know, fringe benefits with people in this business. If you can, you know, you have somebody you can reach out to and say, hey, you know, I'm reaching out to White Plains because I know they sell their leaf mulch. You know, Ricky Hope is the head of DPW there. So I am also reaching out to, you know, the Highway Superintendent's Association. So I'm open to suggestion in terms of pricing.
Good.
We will try to make money on it. If not, we'll get rid of it.
Is there anybody commercially would buy, buy the, the grindings? No, huh?
No, because a lot, a couple of the other municipalities, for instance, Bedford has their own, they have a similar yard to ours. All right? Except they have a company that comes in and runs it. And we've had that offered a lot, but it would put an incredible, incredible amount of traffic on our roads, which those people on Greenwood Street would suffer immeasurably from. You know, it's bad enough that we're on those roads, you know?
Councilman, do you have anything else?
Yeah, so I wanted to switch since I see you have a budget transfer coming up.
I have a budget. It's small. It's a little budget transfer.
And it's your favorite topic, so paving.
Oh, paving. Hold on.
So I know you-
This so happens.
You carry around that?
I know you've been-
You carry around that list?
Yes, absolutely.
I know you've been doing so many-
I live, I live daily with this list. Are you kidding? Let's see, this is, to give you an idea, this is sequencing.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, for this year. This was supposed to be, up to this point, was supposed to be finished this week. Unfortunately, it won't because it won't be paving tomorrow and we won't be paving Friday. So the-
Is that weather related?
No, it is equipment related.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't weather related because we got to get Hill Boulevard open.
No, it wasn't. It was not weather related. So I'm sorry. Continue.
So
Now I have my paving list.
I know you've been doing some anticipatory work up in-
Summit Central and Payne.
Summit Central Payne.
Yes.
And I think you've been doing some on the other side of town too.
Yes, yes. This, this is in the hope. Okay, can I go there?
Do your thing. The podium's yours.
Well-
Just remember Pat's behind you. Just remember that.
So let me, let me put a dish in.
And she has a grin on her face. It's not very-
Last year in September, I started working with Pat and Matt exploring the possibility of bonding $3 million this year.
Correct.
Okay, that being said, because at that point, money was very cheap.
Right.
I believe if I'm not incorrect, and Pat will, tell me if I'm not, I think we were at something like 312,000 a year for 10 years on a $3 million bond.
Please, please address the board.
That $3 million would have allowed us to pave 31 miles of road. All right? 62 lane miles. That would have been everything on the list that, on our list, that's on our website, that was six and worse. Six-
Six to 10.
Six to 10, 10 being the worst, 1 being the best, which would have been a tremendous achievement. Then, fast forward, the federal government steps in.
Well, COVID.
COVID, right, COVID. And then the federal government. COVID was already happening.
Ah, kind of.
You're going to get a lot of mileage in COVID, aren't you? The federal government comes up with this 3.8, 3.9 million dollar, you know, but all kinds of strings attached. Nobody could clarify, was it, except, it was an infrastructure bill? Was it acceptable for paving? Was it only for pipe relining? Was it for drainage? You know, and they weren't giving any clarity when it was coming and what it could be used for. My hope was, at that point, we were exploring the possibility of perhaps taking a million dollars of that money. All right? So when I was laying out my paving, I did it in phases. All right? If we were able to take the million dollars from that money, there were two huge areas I could get done. So that's my phase two of paving. Do you want me to say what they are?
You can, sure.
Okay, that's up to you. If you're ready to go?
Well, so, so where's your phase?
I think we should just wait a little bit on that.
I'd rather, I'd rather not say it because until we have clarity on
Yeah.
the funding.
Yeah.
I don't want to say it and say all of a sudden, yes, we could possibly, we could possibly do this and then we can't.
Fact of the matter is, and Pat can join us if she wants, or she can throw her shoe at Dave. One of the two.
Or a chair.
But, but we, we are still getting, Pat and the finance team have been tending seminars on the ARA money. We are expecting an installment. It's supposed to be split this year or next year. We don't know definitively if, if, what we can put it towards, what infrastructure can we put it towards. And so we still are awaiting the final memo to be received by our finance department to advise us as what we can put it towards. Obviously, paving is high on the list. I, I recognize that.
Honestly, this is exactly the reason why I won't ever publish a paving list. Because I have no way of knowing exactly what the cost of asphalt will be month to month.
Right.
Okay, right now with TACO, we're paying $99.40 a ton laid in place. Okay? Five years ago, we were paying $72 a ton.
Yeah.
The price of crude is up to like $75 a barrel.
Right.
Which that's what the asphalt index is tied to. So, you know, it could change, it could change next month and all of a sudden, I can't do three roads and then people would be disappointed.
But can you tell us what the, what's the paving schedule right now? People get their road paved approximately once every-
When I came to highway, okay, it was approximately every 37.4 years.
And what is it today?
Today, it is just, just a hair around 20.
Okay, and, and with the, how would the extra money help trim that down?
The extra money would put us down to like 16. Because for a million dollars, you're talking about six miles of road.
Right.
You know, which is a substantial percentage of.
So you trim four years?
We always say we have 400 lane miles of road. That's kind of a misnomer. We have 200 miles of road. Sounds more impressive when we say we have 400 lane miles. So I do, I do skirt that.
You exaggerate?
I skirt that. Oh, I do. I skirt that.
Wow, I've never heard him exaggerate about anything.
All right?
All right, well, yeah, but the bottom line is we're trying to work through that. We're working with our finance team. Once we get the final parameters sent down as to what it can be applied to and-
That's why I segmented the paving.
Yeah, absolutely. Paving, I can, I can tell you definitively paving's on the top of the list. Water department's on the list. And there's a couple of enhancements that we've already identified that are, that are key, but they're a bit smaller. But Dave, definitely paving is, is on the list. That if we can apply it, then we have no problem with it.
Everybody's good with the old plan?
Yep.
Okay, good. So-
Thank you, sir.
I will speak to you off the record.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Pat, do you have, Pat, do you have any input or not, not as of yet?
Come on, Pat, I should have dragged John up there.
As of now, paving is not covered as part of the ARA.
Not covered right now as part of the ARA.
As of today.
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to invite Jonathan Netofield from the Yorktown Trail Town Committee up to present to the board on a potential grant with the Hudson Valley Greenway. Jonathan, good evening. Thank you for your patience on this presentation.
Thank you for, thank you for inviting us. As you said, I'm here to represent the Yorktown Trail Town Committee. And just, I think you're probably all aware, but our, our, our goals and objectives are to increase awareness of and usage of the trails, parks and farms in the town of Yorktown because we think that's one of the greatest assets of the town and it doesn't cost much money. So I'm here this evening because we have been thinking about the Empire State Trail, also known as the North County Trail. Actually, if you could, yeah, just, there's a presentation up here. I'm going to, yeah, just leave that there for the time being. Thank you. Actually, if you can, there you go. Perfect. So the, the notion is, we've been thinking of ways in the past of how we can leverage this gift, essentially, from the state of New York and, and how that can enhance life and, and the hamlet of Yorktown. Actually, just as I was sitting back there, I was looking around the town website and I just, I just want to quote you something that you, you have on the website. Deliver pedestrian and bike-friendly streets that will foster a downtown mindset of walkability. This is precisely why we're here. So essentially, what this is, is an outline proposal. Its purpose is to start the discussion. It's not a recommendation or anything at this stage. There is a very strict timetable to this, which we'll talk about at the end, which is why I'm very glad we were able to come. Essentially, it's a, it's a proposal to link the Empire State Trail to the Mahansik Trailway and there through the Mahansik Trailway to FDR State Park. If you can go to the next one, please, you won't be able to read this, so let me just very briefly summarize what the, what we're trying to do here. So this, again, is an extract from the purpose and intent of the proposed overlay law. Create an opportunity for a more economically successful and environmentally responsible town by enabling a hamlet with a more harmonious and pedestrian-oriented public realm and promote complete streets approach and practices as one of the many mechanisms to fill the purposes and intention herein. I guess that's a legal document. Also, I want to quote from something in the goals and benefits of the Empire State Trail Plan, which is to celebrate and promote connections to other regional bicycling and hiking trails to extend the Empire State Trail's physical and economic impact. So the purpose, one of the things that the state did is say, we're going to create this skeleton, this, this spine, if you like, down New York, but we want local communities to use it to enhance local scales. In other words, local trails. So we're looking at this both from the point of view of Yorktown and also from the point of view of, of trails. As I said, this, this, this document is just a starting point. Four objectives we're looking for. The first is to encourage Empire State Trail users to divert through Yorktown Heights, thereby bringing them into direct contact with many of the hamlet's businesses. Secondly, to connect, to directly connect two of Yorktown's largest pedestrian cyclist assets, the Empire State Trail and the FDR State Park. Then fulfill one of the stated aims of the Empire State Trail, which is to use it to expand the local trail network. And then in the very long term, emphasis on very, create a first step in the long-term goal of linking Yorktown and the Hudson River Valley Greenway along the Hudson River. So one of the, you know, one of the benefits, I think I mentioned before, I do a lot of work for communities up and down the Hudson Valley and most of them are river towns of various kinds. And the asset, the, the, the river is such an asset to these towns. We don't have a river. We have other things. But one of the things that I think we should be thinking about as a town is how we can connect to the river through pedestrian and bicyclists. So that's, that's, so the proposed route, if you can go, sorry, to the next, yeah, again, you won't be able to see that, but it's pretty simple. It's to take the, to go from the, essentially where the old railroad station is, Railroad Park, along Comma Street as far as Downing Drive, make a left onto Downing Drive, all the way to the end and then cross over 118, which we're going to talk about, into the Mahansik Trailway, which then leads on to FDR Park. So the only thing I want to say about that is that it's actually a pretty benign route. There are wide sidewalks, there's, as far as cyclists are concerned, there's wide roads with, you know, no limited sight distance or all the other traps that sometimes happen. So it's actually a pretty easy trail. There's not, there's nothing too complicated except for that one crossing, which we'll talk about. So if you can go to the next one, which is, so what we're talking about, and this is what we do as Yorktown Trail Town is, you know, create and, and put up signs where they're, where they're helpful. What, what this project is, is a combination of signs and striping. In other words, it's, they're clues for people to say, oh, you know, where am I, where am I and where am I going? So there are basically two kinds of signs that we'll need. One is what we call an informational sign. And that, just imagine you're walking along the Empire State Trail through, to Railroad Park and there needs to be a sign there that says something like, you can walk from, or bicycle from here to FDR State Park. An ordinary person walking along that would have no clue that there's a pedestrian cyclist access. So we need to, we need to alert them to the fact that this is a possibility. And then, once you're on the actual urban trail, you'll need signs saying, you know, turn left down here or turn right down here. Now, these signs would work both ways. Obviously, the wayfinding has to be both, in both directions. The next one, um, please, is locations of signs. Yeah, here we go. So, um, we, well, my firm in particular has a horror of putting up too many signs. We try and minimize the number of signs, and we think we can get away with only four signs, um, for this project. On the top left there, which is actually on the Empire State Trail as it crosses through, um, Railroad Park, we would have the informational sign. That is to say, you know, if you go down this way, you can go to FDR Park. Then, there would, along the way, there would need to be three directional signs. One, um, at the edge of Railroad Park where it meets Commerce Street, so you've, you've, you've exited the park and, which way do I go now? Go this way, okay. Um, then about a hundred yards further down that, uh, uh, road, where the crosswalk is, um, where, where Commerce meets Downing Drive, you would have a sign saying, go left. And then, when you get to the end of Downing Drive, where you can see the entrance to the Mahansick Trailway, you would need a reinforcing arrow to say, you know, this is, in this direction. So we're not talking about lots of signs. We're, we're, we're talking about at the most, uh, four, four different signs. So let's, uh, talk about the elephant in the room, um, which is crossing Route one eighteen. What we would think is that a crosswalk at right angles, um, to, um, the western end of Downing Drive should be placed across one eighteen. And this would end at the, um, the western side of one eighteen, a few yards south of the actual entrance of the Mahansick Trailway. So, just, if you were coming the other way, we would have a sign on the obvious, so that you, you, you know, I'm, I'm just talking, assuming that you're going from one place to the other, but of course, everything is both ways. So, um, there is no sidewalk on the western side of one eighteen. There's actually quite a wide, I'm not sure what it is, like a pull-up ramp, I mean, uh, you know, an area that you're not supposed to drive on where you could pull up. Um, and, and we think that could be striped as well to indicate that you can walk there. So, stripes across roads are really good for pedestrians, hopefully the drivers too, to say, this is where you're supposed to walk. What we are asking for this evening is the town to authorize the traffic consultant to help us think about the best way of achieving this. We're not, you know, we're, 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 um, uh, trail advocates. We don't pretend to know about road safety. We're obviously aware of it. But, but, we are, if you could look at those pictures there, we are aware that where the Empire State Trail crosses in Yorktown, routes two oh two by Quaker Church Road and one eighteen near Hanover Street, um, there are extensive signs and stripes on the road, which not only alert when you're actually coming up to it, but a hundred or so yards before with the flashing lights. Neither of which we think are terribly expensive. I mean, they're, they're, they're not, uh, the flashing lights are, um, solar. So, we don't think it's a huge big deal to do this, but that's what the traffic consultant and the town hopefully will, will help us. The, the, the next, um, and, and final topic, um, is road striping. So everything I've described so far is predominantly for pedestrians. So, you know, pedestrians use sidewalks, um, bicyclists don't or shouldn't. And we think that if you could put road stripes, or not a road stripes, but, but, you know, bike lane, uh, things in that, in that corridor, uh, in both directions, the roads are wide enough, uh, to accommodate them, we think. Again, the traffic consultant could, could help us on this. Then that would encourage cyclists as well. So, you know, we, we're, we're aware that we are, um, uh, appealing to two constituents here. Those are the pedestrians and the cyclists. I should also mention, I should also mention, um, that, that we have cyclists, serious cyclists on the board of, of Yorktown Trail Town, and they remind us that there are many types of cyclists. So there's the road cyclists, the guys at the races and the lycra and all the rest of it, they're very unlikely to use this trail. Just to be honest. I mean, they're, they're gonna use, but, but, there are roads that they could do to access the park. In other words, so, we may have to do signage for, different signage for, for, for bikes. But other types of bikes, the mountain bikes and the, 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 I think they call them hybrid bikes, are perfectly capable of doing that and are using the trail. Now, I've seen them on the trail. So, um, the, the, the question is, um, and I'm just gonna conclude now. We seek the town's board support for, uh, Yorktown Trail Town to submit a grant application to the Hudson River Greenway, which is due on September the tenth. Not a lot of time, to help fund this project. The project would include a combination of signage, road striping, and other safety improvements necessary to ensure public safety. Because the project involves town property, will require a town board resolution as part of the grant submission. We request the participation of the town's newly retained traffic consultants to review the proposal. And the grant is a fifty-fifty match with a local match supplied by the Yorktown Trail Town Committee and town labor and/or funds. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Couple, a couple of questions.
Yeah.
First of, didn't we do a traffic study there a while back?
There, there's a, there is an existing traffic study based off of the Mangero property.
Right.
Uh, that...
And I was told, I, I seem to remember that it was too short of a run to do like a crosswalk type thing from the light over to there.
I personally don't recall the, the traffic study itself, other than that it required a traffic light.
An issue of, it was too close to put a traffic light.
Correct.
You would have a traffic light, the intersection of two oh two, one eighteen, and then another one immediately at Downing. I think that was what it was.
Right, and if they do, I, I know that there's been talk about the Mangero property coming around again.
Around, coming back out through Cable Vision.
Well, no, they, the, apparently the site plan is that they have to do the traffic light.
Right.
Unless they go...
The site plan requires that. It's part of their approval. Yeah. Except, uh, it, it may not, it, anyway, it may be a hindrance on the actual, uh, selling or, or development of that property because the, what they can put there, uh, it doesn't pay for the traffic light.
Uh, and then, uh, well, that, that was my, those are the two things that were jumping in my mind.
I know Dave and I are probably gonna dovetail a couple of things here.
So let me jump on, jump in first, then you guys can, can take it from there. You got, I, I, I think it's great, all the way until one point, and I, and I think I expressed this to you when we spoke on the phone. And, and so, the multimillion dollar question is, and I think Dave and, and Councilman Diana are gonna address this. How do we deal with the intersection at one eighteen? Like that, that's really what it boils down to. I, I think, I think the, the signage is great. I think, working off of this great asset that we have that cuts through our, I ran on the, on the trailway this morning. Uh, you know, right off of Quaker Church Road. Uh, so I love it. I'm there all the time.
You called me, I would've come and watched.
You would've watched, I know. Maybe you could've drove the golf cart with music playing.
Yeah, there you go.
It'd keep you going. Yeah, um, uh, so I think, I think it's a fantastic idea and a great way to encourage guests and visitors to explore Yorktown. There's no doubt about it. I just get stuck on this, on this intersection of one eighteen and Downing right now.
Well, here's the fact. The fact is, we've had a bicycle fatality in Yorktown. The fact is, the highway superintendent, the elected official, is the one who goes to court. Not the Trail Town, not the town board, not the town clerk, not anybody, me. Alright, so at the end of the day, if I don't feel comfortable, alright, putting people down into an unsafe environment where they can't get across one eighteen safely, nobody's gonna be sitting there cheering for me at the end of the day when I'm sitting in court if there's another fatality. So, that's, that's my feeling. I've, I've, I travel Baldwin Road at least ten times a day. I live on it, okay? Where it crosses over, I ran into Walt Daniels today, and he said to me, well, oh, you, you were doing striping on Saturday, you, why didn't you stripe that? I said, I didn't stripe that because I have reservations about that. I've, that road, I've never seen a person not stop at those stop signs.
Right.
Okay, now to give you...
Sorry, which, I, I'm...
You know where Baldwin Road, where it goes from the new trail to where the FDR Trail is?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, it has to cross over Baldwin as well. So, the second part of that is, the trail, my understanding is, and I've not been on it, but my understanding is the trail on the FDR side is the same as the trail between one eighteen and Baldwin Road. It's not really a paved trail for traditional bicyclists. So, a number of problems. One, the safety issue crossing one eighteen when people are doing fifty miles an hour. Two, your suggestion of using the pull-off lane with the single white line, you know, as a bicycle lane is wonderful, except if someone is heading south on one eighteen, making left on Downing, everybody cuts around there. Everybody cuts around there. So that makes that a safety issue. And like I said, you, you're a hundred percent right. I think we should definitely have a traffic consultant look at it. But again, at the end of the day, it's not gonna be the traffic consultant in court.
Right.
Can I make, can I make two points?
Sure.
Yep. So, the, I'm not that familiar with the Baldwin Road one. Is the, is the, there's no, is the, there's no road striping across...
No, and everybody stops because there's no presumption of safety.
Right.
Now, we have, we have that trail goes through our recycling yard. I could show you half an hour of video of nobody stopping for that. We were striping that Saturday. Bicyclists were cursing at my people because they had to, there was a sign, stop sign, says, stop, walk bike across.
Right.
Doesn't mean a thing, Jonathan. Doesn't mean a thing.
I, 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 I understand and appreciate that, and I've, I've been, um, I, you know, whatever, that's, that, that's happened.
I actually, I actually met with, um, Dave DeLucia from Westchester County Parks. Put him on written notice that that is an unsafe crossing. Because if somebody gets hit on town property there, even though it's a right of way, that's an issue, so...
And both those sides are steep.
Where he puts those, those gates in, alright, and they're to stop cars from going on, but they do slow the bicycles down to make it safer.
Absolutely. Again, I can tell you, I spend a lot of time on the, on their running, and those bikers, they do stop at the gate because it's a narrow path.
Right, they squeeze up there.
So you can't, you can't be, you know, Lance Armstrong going through those gates, you know, as fast as you can. So it would make a lot of sense, especially, we, I know we're getting off topic here, but especially where you're, where you're discussing over by the yard, because both ends of those, I know them because it hurts coming back, going back up the hill, but they're both downhill. And so you get, you do generate a lot of speed.
And actually, isn't that the exact condition that existed over where the other accident was?
Birdsoil?
Yeah.
Well, no, Birdsoil actually had a gate up, and Birdsoil's, you know, I wanna talk about it because...
Yeah, don't talk about it.
Yeah.
So... They're, they're, but it's, it's, it's a similar situation. But it didn't have the ups and downs that we have on Greenwood Street.
But Jonathan, continue, please.
So, so my question is, given that people are crossing this road anyway, why wouldn't we make it safer for them, even though it might not be fully working? And I understand, there's, there's no guarantee that every, the cars are gonna look and all the rest of it. But there's a hundred percent difference between no, nothing. On that road right now, if you're driving, you've got no clues at all that somebody might be crossing on that road, as opposed to an imperfect, um, but better solution. I think that's...
Right, but the other, the other problem that you're, you're facing is it's a state road. So you have to cross over a state road and, and, and I, and I, frankly, I have an email from the state 'cause I, I, again, I think it's a great idea.
We discussed it with them when we were up.
We went, we met with them, we followed up with them. I know that, you know, Ms. Siegel was, uh, was advocating for, for some crossing parameters there as well. And New York State DOT would not include crosswalk pavement markings across Route one eighteen at the subject intersection.
Do they know about the trail?
That's their position. Yeah, they know about the trail.
And, and what, just out of curiosity, I mean, I deal with the DOT the whole time, so I'm just, I'm just curious, I'm just curious to know what...
Would consider placing pedestrian ahead warning signs on both Route one eighteen approaches to the Downing Drive intersection. The determination would be based on the number of pedestrians crossing Route one eighteen at this location. Field review of the location did not observe pedestrians crossing Route one eighteen at this intersection. If the town is a pedestrian count information to indicate the number of pedestrians crossing, then New York State DOT would consider placing advanced warning signs.
We've, I've come across that before.
Yeah, but I just, just, I just wanted to also just follow, we haven't following up on this.
Got it, got it, got it. No, you don't need to, I understand. So, so my biggest point, okay, is that transitioning Yorktown Heights, let's just talk about Heights, to a pedestrian place is going to require different thinking. If we, if we stumble at every single, and I'm not saying it's an unimportant hurdle, but if we, if we don't figure out ways, which is why we wanna sort, talk to the traffic consultant, we're not gonna do what we want to do, because there's always gonna be, you know, where we've got cars. So, so at what point do we say, you know, let's see if we can solve this? That's essentially why we're here.
I gotta, I, if, if I could jump in for just a member of Nettelfield. You're a hundred percent right. We wanna make it walkable.
Yes.
Okay, and, and to that end, and to that, you know, uh, uh, theory, it takes partnering with the state to do that, because we can't improve Route one eighteen, two oh two, et cetera, without their blessings, so to speak. I know I'm speaking to the, preaching to the choir.
I understand.
If we were to have our highway, which we're not going to do, put a crosswalk there, it gives that false sense of security to people, that they can just cross. Let's face it, everybody's on these things. I watch people all the time with their kids, they're running willy-nilly, okay? Put a crosswalk, false sense of security, kids are going across, somebody's gonna get killed. We all do it when you're at that intersection right there to make a left into, uh, the Chico, uh, not the Chico.
Uncle Giuseppe's.
Uncle Giuseppe's. We all pass on that right, you know, uh, our, our good majority of us. There is no, for lack of a better word, a safe haven. I'm sure you've been down through the middle of Peaks Gill, where you come right down into the center of Peaks Gill off of, going past the beach shopping center. There's that weird little island that's there. That's a safe haven for people crossing the street.
Traffic calming, yeah.
For, for people going through with any type of a large vehicle, it's, it's almost impossible, so you have to go so slow through there. The state would have to install something of that nature. So that, in theory, is where, where we stand. Signage is one thing. Get the people to read the signage is then again another thing. But some people will. And as Dave had pointed out earlier, where you have signs that say stop, or you, and no crosswalk, people generally will stop and look in both directions. But that crosswalk gives them a, a real false sense of security.
Or a sense of entitlement. They, they think that it's okay to go right across.
These cars are gonna stop.
Because they do, they do have, pedestrians do have the right of way.
Right.
But that doesn't mean the drivers are going to acknowledge that fact. Now that's, that's where the problem comes in.
But signage such as a park entrance sign, uh, similar signs guiding to the park and so, you know, that's not a...
Well, I don't think we would reckon, if, if the view was that we were creating a danger, we would not be in favor. In other words, it's all or nothing. I mean, I don't think you can lead people to a dangerous point on the road and then say, now you're on your own. We wouldn't, we wouldn't probably support that.
So, but maybe I can offer this, and, and only if you're comfortable, Dave. Maybe we, why don't we just have a conversation with the Schwartz Group? Maybe there's something there that we're not seeing.
I'm not, I'm not adverse to that.
Right, so, let's have an initial conversation with them.
It took me two years to get permission to pay to put the, don't block the boxes at the Cable Vision business, building. Alright, and that was nothing, nothing as, as complicated as this, right? You remember?
Yeah, so...
So, you know, this is...
Let's start with the Schwartz Group.
And that was not a dangerous situation.
Right, let's start with our, our traffic consultant. Let's have a conversation.
Okay.
Maybe they, maybe they see something that we, that we're missing. And I have no problem investing the time and energy there, because we've already tried to get the state to reverse their, their, their view on that intersection. Because I think we do all recognize what you're trying to accomplish is what we all want to accomplish. I think we would love to have bike lanes down Downing.
Yep.
You know, but to have bike lanes down Downing, it's gotta be led towards a safe intersection.
Good, okay, well, thank you.
So we'll, so you have a September eleventh deadline for your, for your...
We do, yes.
So, we need to move quickly with the traffic consultant, so we'll try to put something together, um, in the next week or so.
Have you talked to them, attend, or whatever you want?
Yeah, yeah, no, we'll have you included, absolutely.
Out of curiosity, is the, would a traffic study be, uh, reimbursable, at least fifty percent through the grant, or no?
I would think so, yes.
I think that goes towards the fifty percent, correct?
Well, yeah, I have no problem with that at all.
We would need that understanding when we put the budget together for the grant application.
Yeah.
That there would be X dollars for traffic.
So we will talk with the Schwartz Group and see if they can give us an assessment on, you know, again, whether or not it's worth pursuing with this troubled intersection that we continue to trip over. But I agree with you, it, we have to figure out a way to fix it.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Jonathan. Okay. Uh, we're going to skip over, well, um, we can have Kim. He's gonna do it? Is Dan here? Where's, I think Dan's downstairs still? So Kim, why don't you, why don't you...
He may be listening.
You wanna, you wanna pinch hit?
You gotta come up to the microphone, otherwise Tom's gonna throw stuff at you.
Yeah. So let's, and Adam can jump in, but this isn't in, uh, discussion of the veterans exemption.
Right, we have to do a local law.
Correct.
So we need to set a public hearing.
Correct. Now, uh, the town attorney has gone ahead and drafted...
New legislation, correct.
They required legislation. I think it gets referred to one department?
Yes.
So, I think what we can do is, um, refer and, and, and set the public hearing. You wanna do, I think we can do August tenth. Yeah, so we'll do August, we'll make a motion to, uh, refer out the, and we have Mr. Rodriguez returning now.
So moved.
So we have a motion to...
Refer out and...
Refer out and set the public hearing for August tenth on the veterans exemption law. We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nope.
Thank you.
Anything you'd like to add, Mr. Rodriguez?
No, it speaks for itself.
Quick and easy, alright. Dan, Mr. CRC.
Good job, Adam.
Alright, last but not least...
Well, I just wanna point out, you won't be in court by yourself, you'll be there with me.
That's true, thank you.
Last but not least, Mr. CRC coming to us with an update... Last but not least, Mr. CRC coming to us with an update on Councilman Diana's favorite project.
Oh, yes. You know, Dave, you're gonna be going.
Is this my favorite project?
Oh, God, I hate this project. Dave, you'd be going to court with a lightweight now, though. Look at my weighty list.
Dan, real quick, did we hear back from Con Ed today?
Uh, I did hear back from that Con, well, I, I got in touch with that contact you gave me.
Okay.
And she was gonna look into it and follow up, so I didn't hear back by the end of the day, so hopefully, uh.
All right, let's stay on.
She can apply some pressure to that.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah.
All right, so why don't you update us on, uh, on the fluoride project?
All right, well, first and foremost, as, as, um.
It's gonna be all right.
Matt just touched on, one of our impediments to getting this thing wrapped up is, is the electric. It was originally supposed to come off the aqueduct, then they decided to come off, um, Old Crompon Road. And we're still waiting, the job's been released, but we have no power, got no ventilation. And it's just leading to just.
Right, it's the.
Yeah, it's just.
Bureaucracy of Con Ed that's really strangling this thing.
At this point, it's like beyond, uh, a problem for us.
Yeah.
You know, and never mind trying to, uh, commission the facility, get it tested.
If we don't hear, if we don't, if you don't have something by tomorrow morning, let's follow up again.
Okay, yeah, at, at this point, it's, it's key to.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Plus, it also ties into, we've, we've got this, uh, grant from the State Health Department.
Yes.
So we need to wrap.
Yeah.
Project up, and again, it's, it's just, uh, it's killing us.
Yeah, I understand.
How much power, uh, how many amps does that give you? Hundred amps?
Uh, I, I think it's a three-phase power supply, so, but I, I think it's only like a hundred amps. But, you know, it's, it's really not a big deal, other than it was three-phase and that complicated matters. They originally.
Some kind of wireless connection, something, so you can monitor remotely and like that.
We've tried looking at, uh, bringing a generator over, we've tried.
Well, there, there is, there is.
There's actually a generator there.
There now, um, but, you know, it, it's just getting in the way, you know, it, it, they can do some work now and, and there's an ongoing dialogue with the, uh, the contractor and our consulting engineer to, to, you know, just get this going and put the screws to them.
Right.
The electrician's pretty much done all he could do. Last week, actually, Verizon was in to do the FiOS hookup. And I think our, um, IT consultants, I think Logic Holly was, was in there as well. But again, we can't test anything. We need to connect the telemetry to the joint waterworks so we know what the flow is.
Right.
So that we can properly dose the chemical.
And when they're gonna remove their pipes, you know, from, uh?
From the aqueduct?
Yeah, aqueduct.
Uh, we're not even looking to complicate matters with that right now because.
They were gonna do in-house job or something?
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna do it ourselves. We, we don't wanna give the contractor any more distractions. We just wanna, uh, get, get their primary focus on getting this facility up and running.
So we gotta get Con Ed on the ball and, and that's, that's the linchpin at this point, but I know that's. Yes, sir.
How are we budget-wise on this project with our nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant?
He'll, he'll, uh, update us right now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, um, actually, we're, we're pretty much at, spending at the, the grant, which is nine hundred and change. And, uh, as the board knows, there was, uh, there was a change order, about, uh, fifty-five thousand dollars, which related to the, uh.
The building.
The building and, and having to reconstruct it in a different manner. Um, and now this evening, I'm, I'm showing you, uh, a change order, which is, uh, uh, well, almost, uh, forty-six thousand dollars. That was a variety of issues. Some of them unfortunately was, we didn't know what was out there. And when it came time to make these interconnections to the twenty-four inch transmission main, there were inked connections nobody knew about. We, we were having difficulties, uh, shutting the main down so we could, uh, do some of the, uh, the tapping into it, which was at a very high pressure, so that nobody really wanted to do it fully, uh, but, you know, just issues like that. We couldn't turn the water off. Finally, we got it turned off.
Yeah.
And then found that there was an interconnection that nobody knew about. So that, you know, by and large, that was some of it. The other thing that's sort of related to that was the whole configuration of how the, um, the sampling line and the injection line connecting the twenty-four inch line to the, to the building itself. The hope was that we could use some, um, some of the existing pipes as conduits and none of that worked out. So that's, that's another change order. And then there's a small one, uh, because we realized there was an opportunity to keep the expanding on the low-pressure sewer system that serves that area. So originally, it wasn't proposed as a, as a public sewer extension.
Right.
So we added some fittings to facilitate, uh, future, right, future connections to folks on Old Crompon Road.
I get that.
Yeah, I mean, that's like your typical change order. Good idea.
Yeah.
Not a lot of money, let's do it.
I get it. You know, the others.
Where are we at total wise, Dan, with this project?
Cause we have a hundred thousand in change orders, a hundred thousand plus.
Well, this, well, this guy is, so it's seven eighty, about seven eighty-eight with him. No, I don't have the, uh, electrical contract. The electrical contract, we're on track. There was a, there was, actually, I wouldn't even call it a change order. The contract authority was one, but we have, you know, like a miscellaneous additional work item. It was like seven hundred dollars. And then the Arcata stuff.
Yeah, I know we were, uh, so, so we got nine hundred and ten thousand dollars or nine hundred and something thousand, I forget exactly what it was, in the grant, uh, which is, which we had to take out of Kenny's budget. I'm preaching to the choir here once again. I just was curious where we were at bottom line.
I believe, Pat, uh, Dan, if you can, maybe, if you need help with Patsy, I think we're with this change order that puts us roughly about one fifteen over.
Yeah.
We're about a million three, right?
I did, you know what?
No, we had the seventy, you had the seventy thousand dollar change order from December, and now you have the forty-five.
Fifty, no, fifty-five, um, fifty-five from.
Fifty-five and forty-five.
Excuse me, fifty-five and forty-five. I thought it was seventy was the one in December.
And then there was one before that with Arcatas, when they had to actually strip the building all the way down.
No, that's that one.
That's the fifty-five.
That's the fifty-five.
That's the fifty-five?
Yeah.
Uh, uh, let me just say something, okay? See this picture over here? If it was done when the money was there, it would be much less than what you wanna spend it now. And this place still need to be cleaned up, okay? It, and it is part of the joint waterworks and we are the one, we're using it. So there was, you know, I, you know, you can talk to the guy over there, who's gonna pay for this one also? This will come out, or maybe they increase the rate, either one.
Pat, how much do we get back already on this?
We've got about, um.
Proximate. About four hundred thousand so far?
Yep.
Upon completion, we get the remainder, they give it back in.
No, it's reimbursed.
Right now, the last submission, we're just waiting for a copy of the cancelled check. And then we can send it in. Then we reach the total reimbursement.
Okay.
So the town share right now, we're in for probably about two hundred thousand without these change orders.
Okay.
Yeah, cause we're, we're looking at a fifteen percent over on, just on this part of the project.
Right.
Maybe also at this point. Dan, there was no contingencies in there? They didn't have a ten percent contingency or anything that you could tap into?
There's a small contingency, but, you know, the, the stuff is outside of that.
I, I mean, but the reality is, you're, you're, the project's completed.
Thank God.
I mean, that, that's just, that's just the reality. Once Con Ed finally hooks up the power, they're off and running. It's done, it's over with. You know, this is all, chapter closed.
Yeah, but I mean, there's still work that, that the contractor needs to complete. And, you know, that's, that's been the argument for the past couple of weeks that, you know, we, we argued to bring some, you know, a generator there. I mean.
I know.
Everybody, everybody, you know, people build houses, you're building houses, you don't usually have power. You have a generator, the trades are working, you're getting it done. So that argument certainly goes to here. There's, there's, uh, the floor needs to be done. There's curbs that need to go in for the spill containment, so there's, there's piping that still needs to, you know, process pipings.
Right, but, but is there a, can we, are we anticipating more change orders based on the work that needs to be done? So again, we're, we're nearing the finish line.
Right.
Don't look at me.
Ten years, one million. Could have been a lot earlier. There is a picture. The commissioner of the health was here and I have gotten a hundred email and I have the record and I, I, I have some guessing that who was sending me that email, okay? They don't need a fluoridation. If she says it's no good, I would have bought it. The dentist was, there were more dentists here I have seen than anybody else in any college graduating it, you know, they were here. Thank you, it is done.
Poor Dan gets beat up for this job, but he inherited it.
Yeah, not your fault.
See what happens when things get kicked down the road, the candidates, kicked down and kicked down.
Right here.
Who's on the board?
I was the one I told to shut down, okay? Because I knew how the fluorine works.
So what, so we need to do is, um.
Yeah, what, what do you need us to do, Dan?
Yeah, I mean, we have to do a resolution approving the change order.
Okay.
And I apologize, I'll get you a full accounting of the, the number in advance of the, of the meeting to, uh, next week.
Yep, yeah, no problem.
I'll try and get it to you tomorrow.
Yeah, and if you could just get, uh, Diana the resolution, we can pass it on Tuesday.
Okay.
But we have a question from our comptroller. You wanna come up?
No, I just want to ask Kim, when we do a resolution, I need to sort of transfer that also.
Okay. Okay, yeah, just let, just let me know.
Yeah, so just work with our finance department to make sure that the proper transfer is included.
And have the, uh, the exact number.
I just don't see how we have a choice in the matter. No.
No, we don't, but.
You don't. You don't have a choice. It is what it is. Okay, so you'll work with Diana and you'll work with, uh, the finance team.
This is Tommy's Christmas gift that keeps on giving.
Keeps on giving, I know, I know. Okay.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
No, appreciate it. All right, we have, uh, resolutions authorizing the comptroller to process a budget transfer of six hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars.
How much was that?
Six hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars for paving. Congratulations there, highway superintendent.